Meeting to order. Appreciate everybody coming down. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, all of the things because we might not see them until after the holidays, so happy Kwanzaa. We celebrate all the holidays and we appreciate the diversity of the city. All right, so that leads us Commissioners to the adoption of the agenda which was sent out beforehand, and we'll need a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next is item C, which is the approval of the November 13th, 2025 minutes, which was also sent out beforehand, and we'll need a motion for the minutes or any comments? Need a motion and a second? There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and the November 13th minutes are adopted. Next is item D, which is the public comment period. And Commissioners, this is a new rule, and so per our amended rules, we had the signup sheet, nobody had signed up, but pursuant to section 8-44 of the TCA, the Tennessee Code annotated, this is the public comment period, and there were no public comments. So we'll get into the public comment period for each of the cases. And Lisa, why don't you explain why we did this? Because it's brand new.
Sure, so Tennessee state law requires that for all public meetings that there be an opportunity to speak on any agenda item. You all recall, we amended our rules of procedure to set up the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting, and that is specifically intended for items that have a closed public hearing or that do not have an otherwise required public hearing per our rules. So all zoning, all rezoning requests, SP requests, subdivision requests have a rule required public hearing, so those will be later on in the agenda. So this time is specifically for items that have a closed public hearing or that don't otherwise have a required public hearing. So it's a pretty small, limited bit.
Thank you, and we just, I want everybody, as we get used to our new rules, and we'll go slow to make sure that everybody understands what those particular rules are. So all of the zoning items, the subdivision items are on the agenda and will have public hearings if they don't pass on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. So that leads us to, so on item D, that concludes that there were no public comments on those particular items. And so we'll move on to item E, which is the recognition of the council members. And I saw Councilman Eslick, would you like to say a few words or you're okay? All right, so Councilman's waving us off, and we appreciate you coming down, thank you very much. And if it comes up, you're also allowed to speak during the, we encourage you to speak on the item if it doesn't pass. Okay, so that leads us to item F, which is items for deferral or withdrawn, and Matt's going to take us through that.
All right, our items for deferral or withdrawal tonight are, starting on page three of your agenda, item number 1, 2025 S 173 001, Crowthers Crossing, Phase 10, Section 2A, staff recommendation is to withdraw. On page five of your agenda, item number 7, 2025 S 145 001, re-subdivision of part of Lot 40, Plan of Clifton, staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th meeting. Item number 9, 2025 S 175 001, 314 Luna Drive, staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th meeting. Item number 10, 2025 S 183 001, Stevens Valley, Phase 1, staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th meeting. Item number 11, 154 73P 001, Thienman Townhomes Amendment, staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number 12, 2025 Z 084 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer to the February 26th meeting. Item number 13, 2025 Z 093 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. On page eight of your agenda, item number 22, 2025 S 200 001, 4319 Saundersville Road, staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th meeting. And on page nine of your agenda, item number 28, 2025 Z 109 PR 001, staff recommendation is to defer to the January 8th meeting. And that concludes the items for deferral or withdrawal.
Thank you, Matt, and so make sure we get these correct, and so the items for deferral or withdrawal are the following. Items number 1, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 22, and 28, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. Next is item G, which is the consent agenda, Matt will take us through that as well, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, items noted on tentative on consent will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting to determine if there is opposition present. If there is opposition present, please raise your hand, and the item will be taken off the tentative consent agenda and placed on the agenda to be heard in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As a notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Starting on page four of your agenda, item number 3, 2021 SP 057 001, Marina Grove, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Item number 4, 2025 SP 009 001, 10 04 and 11 04, Cass Street, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 5, 2025 SP 045 001, 515 Anderson Lane, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Item number 6, 2024 S 139 001, Shular Clarksville Highway, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. On page five of your agenda, item number 8, 2025 S 171 001, Stewart's Ferry King Property, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page six of your agenda, item number 15, 2025 SP 049 001, Alberta Street SP, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 16, 2023 NL 002 002, 1085 Zophi Street Amendment, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number 17, 2024 S 173 001, Hewitt Subdivision, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 18, 2025 S 160 001, 212 Capital View Avenue Subdivision, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 19, 2025 S 186 001, 2015 Scott Avenue, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 20, 2025 S 191 001, re-subdivision of part of lots 14 through 17, a block EE on the revised plan of Fairview subdivision, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 21, 2025 S 195 001, John Lefit Builders LLC Property, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page eight of your agenda, item number 23, 2025 Z 101 PR 001, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 24, 2025 Z 102 PR 001, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 25, 2025 Z 103 PR 001, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 26, 2025 Z 105 PR 001, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. On page nine of your agenda, item number 27, 2025 Z 107 PR 001, is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. I will now go through the consent agenda items with their full captions. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Starting on page four of your agenda, item number 4, 2025 SP 009 001, 10 04 and 11 04, Cass Street, this is a request to rezone from R6 to SP zoning for property located at 10 04 and 11 04, Cass Street, to permit eight multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page five of your agenda, item number 8, 2025 S 171 001, Stewart's Ferry King Property, this is a request for concept plan approval to create 33 lots utilizing conservation development standards on property located at 1658 Stewart's Ferry Pike and Stewart's Ferry Pike, unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance to section 3-9. On page six of your agenda, item number 15, 2025 SP 049 001, Alberta Street SP, this is a request to rezone from RS5 to SP zoning for property located at 228 and 230 Alberta Street to permit five multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 16, 2023 NL 002 002, 1085 Zophi Street Amendment, this is a request to amend neighborhood landmark overlay district on property located at 1085 Zophi Street within a neighborhood landmark overlay district to permit personal care services. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page seven of your agenda, item number 17, 2024 S 173 001, Hewitt Subdivision, this is a request for final plot approval to create one lot on property located at 2250 Stewart's Ferry Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance to section 4-2.5 for lot screening. Item number 18, 2025 S 160 001, 212 Capital View Avenue Subdivision, staff recommendation, I'm sorry, a request for final plot approval to create two lots on property located at 212 Capital View Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exceptions to section 3-5 for lot frontage and lot area. Item number 19, 2025 S 186 001, 2015 Scott Avenue, this is a request for final plot approval to create two lots on property located at 2015 Scott Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exception to section 3-5 for lot frontage. Item number 20, 2025 S 191 001, re-subdivision of part of lots 14 through 17, a block EE on the revised plan of Fairview subdivision, this is a request to create one lot on property located at 3722 West Hamilton Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exception to section 3-5.2 for lot frontage. Item number 21, 2025 S 195 001, John Lefit Builders LLC Property, this is a request for final plot approval to create two lots on property located at 637 West Borough Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including exception to section 3-5.2 for lot frontage. On page eight of your agenda, item number 23, 2025 Z 101 PR 001, this is a request to rezone from RS5 to R6A zoning for property located at 307 Joyner Avenue, staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 24, 2025 Z 102 PR 001, this is a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to R8A zoning for property located at 505 Patterson Street, staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 25, 2025 Z 103 PR 001, this is a request to rezone from RS10 to R10 zoning for property located at 1814 County Hospital Road, staff recommendation is to approve. On page nine of your agenda, item number 27, 2025 Z 107 PR 001, this is a request to rezone from R8 to R6A zoning for property located at 1103 West Grove Avenue, staff recommendation is to approve. And then under letter I, other business, item number 29, new employment contract for Stella Adu. Item number 30, contract renewals for Emily Lang, Gray Claxton, James Guthrie, Anita McCag, and Andrea Dorlester. And item number 34, accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Matt, and so Commissioners, these will be the, and Matt, make sure we get these correct, these will pass all at the same time on the consent agenda, and those are, and the following items are on the consent agenda. Items number 4, 8, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 27, 29, 30, and 34, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items are passed on the consent agenda, is there a motion? Motion, second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Eyes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. And so what that means is that we're going to consider six items for a public hearing, and that is, those are items number 2, 3, 5, 6, 14, and 26. And so I do, since we did change our rules on the presentation part, and I'll go through this, we do appreciate everybody coming down, it means a lot. As you know, all of the Commissioners are volunteers, Nashville citizens, and we appreciate the Commissioner's service to the city. And so how this happens for these public hearing, we'll have the presentation from the staff, and then we'll open the item for public hearing, we'll ask the applicant to come up, they used to have 10 minutes, but now they have eight minutes, and then you can save two of the eight minutes for rebuttal. And then, we used to do it differently, but now everybody needs to come to the podium, line up, and we do opposition and for or neutral, you just come up and everybody speak at once. It's much friendlier that way, we think. So then, we'll have the rebuttal from the applicant, and then the council member, and then we'll do the, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have the Commissioner deliberation, and then we'll vote on the item. All right, so thanks everybody for coming down, and we are on item number two.
All right, my name is Savannah Garland, and this is number item two on the agenda. This request is to rezone from R10 to CS. Staff recommends to approve. This property has been zoned one and two family residential since 1974, and it is currently vacant. The property is adjacent to parcel zone Commercial Service and Commercial Limited, R10 and Office Residential. The subject site is boarded by a railroad line at the rear of the site along the western property line. At the October 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission hearing, the policy on the subject site was changed from suburban neighborhood evolving policy to the suburban community center policy. The proposed SC zoning district would permit low intensity retail, office, and consumer services, which meets the goals of the suburban community center policy. This site also contains a limited area of conservation policy, and the CO policy on the site identifies a stream along the northern and eastern property boundaries. The T3 CC policy intent is to create and enhance suburban community centers, encouraging their development or redevelopment as intense mixed-use areas that are compatible with the general character of the suburban neighborhoods. The proposed CS district at the subject site is consistent with the T3 CC policy goals and fits in with the surrounding context of other CS zoned and developed properties. Therefore, staff does recommend to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And so Commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? Come on up, welcome, state your name, and you get eight minutes and can save two of the eight minutes for rebuttal. Well, we'll have to turn your microphone on. So there's the clock, so you're responsible for the, going to six minutes, okay, go ahead.
I'm Nick Goodrich with Dewey Engineering, I wanted to give kind of a quick background on the site and what we're trying to accomplish. There was originally...
Hold on one second, is his microphone on? Let's see.
Get closer.
Tap it, let's see. Yeah, it's on, just go closer, all right.
I wanted to give some background on what we're trying to accomplish and the original site. There was a single-family home on this site, which implies there's sewer service, but they got out there and there was not sewer service to this site, so we're not sure what they were doing with their sewer, but there's not a septic tank either. So we're trying to find uses that don't require sewer service, and that's the purpose of rezoning to CS, that gives us some uses such as storage lot and things like that, that will accomplish that and make this site usable and keep it valuable to the property owner. And with that said, I think at the last meeting, we were pulled off consent by a neighbor, so I wanted to kind of go through some of their concerns, we talked to them afterwards, some of their concerns were about development creeping into their neighborhood. The lot across the street that you can kind of see to the right, my right, I guess, that is also CS, it extends further back into the neighborhood than we do. There's also the stream buffer, our site will always be buffered from the neighborhood by the stream, so we don't feel like we're extending commercial uses into the neighborhood any further than they already are. And then their last was traffic with CS, there's a wide range of uses, and they were concerned about traffic onto the road. This lot is already small, there's going to be stream buffers across the back and the front, which is going to narrow that even more, and we're outside the UZO, so parking requirements are still applicable here. So we're going to be limited by how much parking we can get, and this site's not going to support very much parking. So we don't feel like this site can ever support an intense commercial use, even though it's in the CS zoning. And with that said, I think that's all we wanted to say, we would appreciate your support resoning to CS.
Thank you, and you'll get two minutes for rebuttal, appreciate it. Anyone wishing to speak? Come on up, if anybody wishing to speak, in opposition or for it, anyone? Oh, Councilman, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate the help on this project. I'm not sure it was the first property I was asked about when I took office, but it is the most questioned property that I've run into so far. It is in an odd spot, and the big part about it is not having sewer, and that's been the problem from the beginning with the investors or anybody trying to purchase this. So it is surrounded by CS on three sides, and with the limited space, this seems to be a pretty good opportunity to kind of cap that area and end any more growth or traffic or anything in that area. So with that, I say I support this, and I appreciate the help, and hope you all will support it as well.
Thank you, Councilman, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, there's nobody here to speak, so wave the rebuttal, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. We're going to start, Vice Chair, you want to go first? You always go first.
I do, I seem to. I don't see any reason not to support staff's recommendation of approval.
Any other discussion? Maybe any other discussion? Seeing none, would you like to do a motion, Vice Chair?
Sure, I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation to approve this project.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Eyes have it, item number two is passed. So we are now on to item number three.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Laszlo Martone, and I'll be presenting item number three. And the request is to permit a preliminary SP to permit a mixed-use development. And staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all The subject site consists of one parcel totaling 5.94 acres, and it's located on the east side of Hobson Pike, just north of the intersection with Hamilton Church Road. The property has been zoned RS10 since 2000 and is currently vacant. Surrounding properties are zoned agricultural residential, mixed-use limited, commercial service, and specific plan, while surrounding land uses include single-family residential, retail shopping center, gas station, few religious institutions in the area, and vacant commercial land. The site is accessed via Hobson Pike, which is classified as a Collector Avenue and the Major and Collector Street Plan. The western portion of the site fronts Hobson Pike and is within the T3 NC policy area, which supports development of pedestrian-scale mixed-use centers that serve surrounding neighborhoods. And the eastern third of the site is, falls within the transition policy area, which encourages middle-density housing types and serves as a buffer between higher-intensity uses and lower-density neighborhoods. The proposed SP is a mixed-use development that includes three buildings for non-residential uses and 52 multifamily residential units. The three non-residential buildings front Hobson Pike and are combined 16,900 square feet. In the rear, the multifamily residential units are shown in groupings of six and eight attached townhome units and are oriented along private drives and common open spaces. The plan provides a maximum building height for both the commercial buildings and the attached townhomes for 35 feet across the entire site. And within the site's perimeter, there's a combination of B landscape buffers as well as C landscape buffers to provide a transition from the non-residential portion to the residential portion. And I'll just note that short-term rentals, both owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied, are prohibited throughout the entire development. In reviewing the SP, staff found that the proposed plan meets several goals of both the T3 NC and the transition policy areas. The plan includes three buildings for non-residential uses, which furthers the policy's goals of providing neighborhood services. The proposed 52 attached townhome units provide a moderate-density residential development, and that aligns with the transition policy, which intends to encourage middle-density housing types. Both portions of the site share access from Hobson Pike through private drive... Both portions of the site share access from Hobson Pike through private drives and are also connected by an internal sidewalk network, which further supports the policy's emphasis on connectivity and consolidated access. And additionally, the plan meets several of the building form and site design guidelines of the policies by maintaining a maximum building height of 35 feet, providing landscape buffers to ensure appropriate transitions. And overall, staff finds the proposed plan meets the policy goals for both areas. And we recommend approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you, Laszlo. Appreciate that. And commissioners will open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Welcome. You have eight minutes and can save two of the eight and please state your name.
Good evening. I'm Jared Gray with Civil Design Consultants. Uh, I am here representing Fam Properties, uh, the owner of the project. Again, as has already been said, we are, uh, on 5.94 acres. We are looking for approval for, uh, the SP that is before you. Uh, all reviewing agencies have recommended approval or approval with conditions. Uh, we did, uh, complete a traffic study on this particular lot. Uh, and the conditions of NDOT we fully agree with. We, we agree with all conditions that have been set, uh, for this project. Uh, we believe that we've created a, a policy consistent, a balanced, uh, development that strengthens the neighborhood, that gives additional retail space, which the area does sorely need, in our opinion. And we do request, uh, that you support us in the SP with the recommendation of approval. I'd like to, uh, reserve two minutes for rebuttal, please.
We'll save you two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Alright, so anyone wishing to speak? It could be for, against, neutral? Come on up if you'll, if you'll line up behind the podium and then everybody can speak. Come on up and please state your name. You don't have to tell us where you're from. Yeah, pass, give it to Laszlo and then we'll, we'll give. Thank you. Yeah, get to the microphone here. And then you got two minutes and there's-
Two minutes.
You gotta state your name. Go ahead.
Okay. Dear Honorable Members of Metropolitan Planning Commission, thank you for listening to me. I have, uh, sent email a couple of weeks before detailing all the concerns and those concerns are really scary. If you have a chance, I would really request you to go through, uh, that development that is, uh, proposed. First of all, um, there is three church, literally three new church surrounding that property. Brand new three church, huge church. One of them opened last year. The other one is in the finishing stage that's going to open maybe in a couple of months. And the third one started construction just last month. Three new church, literally across the surrounding this property. Second thing, there has been accidents. I own the property right there across the street, so there has been mass- numerous accidents with traffic stopping up because it's a single lane road, both the sides. And this, this state highway, it's a connector between I-40 and I-24. There is, and there's a, a Long Hunter State Park, less than three miles there. People are going in summertime with their families to, you know, and, and there's a fishing area. I don't want to take too much time. I know the clock is tickling. I want to just point out, I, I really made it an effort two weeks to put up this in detail about there will be problems, ongoing problems already. And this is going to, once we have, there are so many vacant lots. If we approve one of these things, I'm okay with getting residential. Having there, we need, uh, a, a budget resident in that area, but adding commercial, it's a completely different animal, as you know. So I would again request to please read this, uh, my, my three page, two and a half page and make the decision. I, I, I'm perfectly fine, whatever you make the decision. As you see this, this application was done in 2021. So this developer has been trying four years, not, you know, but you can look at what hap- Is it, I'm done with the timing? Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, commissioners for giving me the time.
Time flies when you're having fun at the planning commission. Alright. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, honorable members. Sorry if I sound a little sick. Um, I have cold and flu symptoms, but I didn't want to miss this meeting. Uh, my name is Asmin. I'm a local business and property owner at, right in front of this location. Um, I've been at this business for five years and I'm in the area 24/7. So everything I'm going to share with you is firsthand experience. The first reason I'm against this is because of the amount of traffic. Hobson Pike is only a one-lane road for traffic going each way. And with a project this size, the congestion and mass amount of traffic will be outrageous. There's already a church right next to this property being constructed right now and it's touching the property that's being considered for rezoning. And just today, I was driving home and I had to sit 10 minutes for a truck carrying cement and small stones to move out of the way so I can pass and get home. The shoulder on the lane is very small, so you can't pass over there either. Multiple car accidents occur there per month and some of them are life-threatening. Last year, there was an 18-wheeler Amazon truck that ran into a small sedan that resulted in the death of two people. There are multiple instances with injuries and even death because of traffic congestion and the amount of cars that pass through Hobson Pike. Long Hunter Park is located three miles from this property and it's a beautiful park with activities for walking, running, fishing and all of that. I'm training for a marathon, so I'm actually at Long Hunter Park, six days a week, running the lake loop. And I've had to deal with traffic backed up all the way to Hobson Pike sometimes. According to the, uh, Metropolitan, uh, Mission, it states preservation of important assets and Long Hunter is an extremely important asset, which will face repercussions if the zoning plan is approved. Lastly, there's a school .8 miles from the zone called JFK Middle School. I am familiar with many teachers and bus drivers that work at this school. And according to them, zoning of this property would cause a huge buildup of traffic and make it so that bus drivers, teachers and parents taking their children to school will be late and struggle to get them to work and get their children to school. So with all of these reasons in mind, um, I am against this property for rezoning. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up. If y'all would line up and we can do a little quicker if you want to speak. Thank you.
My name is Fawaz Gheer. I'm the, one of the owners for this, uh, project. And, uh, I think this project helps community, especially the, uh, the commercial, the, commercial item. The, uh, for example, the doctor's office or this kinds of things is far away from this area. I know, uh, people disagree with the, uh, commercial area is because they, they're not worried about the traffic or anything. They just worry about benefits themselves because they don't want any other businesses next to their business. But, uh, my understanding is with this project, it will help develop the area. This area is like, you know, is full subdivision around. This land is vacant for a long time. So I try to use it. I mean, build, build it in a, I thi- I think as a city or the, this area needs more div- needs, needs more buildings, more, uh, uh, places for people to live. This is why our thinking is of this project. But, uh, the traffic wise or this, uh, things, I believe the ex- the expert from NDOT, from planning, they already made the studies for that and approved it according to the study they have. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, two minute rebuttal.
As part of our team, we brought on KCI to do our traffic study. Megan Sigler is here with KCI. I'm going to let her address the concerns relative to accident data.
Welcome.
Hey, everybody. Uh, Megan Sigler with KCI Technologies. Um, we did a, um, multimodal transportation analysis for this development in accordance with all of NDOT's standards. Um, so we ran capacity analysis. We have recommendations that NDOT has adopted into their conditions and the developer agrees with those conditions. As part of the MMTA, we did, um, run crash analysis through here, so we evaluated those crashes. Um, I don't think we determined any identifiable, um, trend in crash, so we didn't have any recommendations regarding what those crashes were. But we do have signal timing recommendations to help with the capacity at the signal, um, as well as a left turn into the project site to try and pull people as, out of that lane as much as possible so that we don't have people backing up Hobson Pike anymore. And if you have any additional questions, please let me know.
Anything else? Thank you. Alright, and the council member is not? I didn't see the councilman. Alright, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Leslie, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the issue is basically about the traffic. Uh, I just want to ask a question. Would, when your, your recommendation, will those, uh, lights be smart lights, signal lights or?
Hold on, let, let, let's let Laszlo go first and then we'll, if we need something from the engineer, we'll-
Okay.
The traffic. Laszlo?
Sorry about that. Want to make sure we're on the right screen. Um, can you repeat the question? Sorry about that.
I have to repeat it? No, I just wanted to know whether lights, the traffic lights, will be the smart signals that we're implementing across the, uh, city or will it just be the regular, and I, if there are actual lights?
There, there is currently a traffic light at, um, Hobson Pike and Hamilton Church. And I think, um, one of the recommendations was that, that get upgraded, it's, it's timing. Um, and there's actually, I confirmed with one of the NDOT reviewers that there is a, another development to the north of this one that's actually, that's part of their entitlement process. They're, um, upgrading the signal timing. Um, so, um, with this particular development, some of the things that they looked at with the MMTA was including a center turn lane, which is going to help with, um, circulation and access. And then, um, a big focus was aligning their driveway, um, with the driveway. You can kind of see it on the screen. It's, um, no lighter shading, but there's a driveway to a church property across the street. So generally, we look at aligning access to create safer turning motions and, you know, they worked with us on that.
So will the traffic study actually help the flow of a lot of, it seems like the opposition is about the crashes and so forth like that. Will implementing this, uh, help with the, with the flow or hurt?
I, I would think that, you know, when you look at the geometries and aligning the driveways, it should make it safer for turning movements. Um, you know, there, there is going to be an increase in traffic, but as far as safety, NDOT's reviewed their criteria for access spacing and alignment and, um, it meets their standards and they recommended approval.
Thank you. I have nothing further to say.
Any other discussion, questions, Vice Chair?
I just had a question sort of in follow-up. So it says to suggest, uh, center turn lane and just looking at the- I always am confused by this one. We suggest adding a turn lane, a center turn lane, but it is a two-lane road and we're not increasing the width of the road. How do we get the center turn lane?
Um, so as part of the final site plan that they'll, you know, have to submit to us in the following review, um, there is some right-of-way, you know, dedication. And so they'll have to do striping and put in, you know, directional arrows for that center turn lane, um, to enter into their property. And, and that would continue to re- review that with the final site plan.
But if the, if the road itself doesn't get wider, does the center turn lane just come out of the? Like, there's two lanes and-
I mean, I don't know the exact width of this pavement, but they'll, during the final site plan review, they'll either, if, if they don't have enough pavement, they may have to add additional pavement where that right-of-way dedication is.
Okay.
Or if there is enough pavement, they'll re-stripe the, the road.
Okay, okay. I'm always a little bit confused when we do this and it seems like we just put a center lane where there used to be two lanes. Um, okay. I, I, it is a narrow road to add a fair amount of development. You know, I do understand the, the, uh, concerns raised by the community, but I also trust that NDOT is looking at this. So.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? We'll need a motion? Anybo- anybody want to make a motion? Uh, we'll go, Commissioner Henley and then Commissioner Dundon. Commissioner Henley?
I was going to support the chair's-
Oh, oh, well, let's go to Commissioner Dundon and then, uh- Oh! Commissioner Henley, would you like to make a motion and then-
Ladies first, Chair.
And then Commissioner Dundon will say, okay, thank you. There's been a motion. Uh, go ahead and make the motion again. Sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thanks for explaining. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, accept staff's recommendation to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Second, Commissioner Dundon in seconds. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Oppose no? Eyes have it. And we are- And Director?
It's my understanding that the next item on the agenda, number five, is going to defer indefinitely. Is that correct? Is the applicant here to confirm that?
Let me just say, so item number three is approved and then-
Oh, forgive me, Chairman.
No, you're fine, Director.
I was jumping over you here.
I thought it was item number three. Alright, so item number five? Director, is anyone here in the audience in opposition to item-
No, no, that one's def-
Oh, wait a second.
The applicant is requesting-
Oh!
Forgive me, I wasn't being clear. For the next item, number five, um, which is 2025 SP 045001, 515 Anderson Lane. It is my understanding that the applicant is wishing to defer the project indefinitely.
Indefinitely, okay.
Would you like to have them confirm or?
Is that, yeah, let's confirm that. Is the applicant in the room confirming? If they're waving at us and saying yes, that's, they're going to defer indefinitely. Alright, and so there are folks here still in opposition, but we're taking it off the calendar and is, is everybody okay with that? I just want to- Yep, okay. See, thumbs up. Alright, so commissioners, we'll need a motion to, to, in, to defer item number five indefinitely. Is there a motion to do that? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Oppose no? Eyes have it. And item five is deferred indefinitely. And so we, that brings us, we're going at lightning speed, by the way, for Metro Planning. Item number six.
Chairman, while we're at the administrative or some, uh, discussion points, I'd also wanted to let you know, it is my understanding that item number 26, which was also scheduled to be heard, that, um, that the, that there is no longer anyone here in opposition to that. And so I wondered if, um, we might confirm that with the audience and then consider a vote from the commission about-
Thank you, Director.
Um, approving that item on consent.
Let's do that. So item number 26, which is 2025 Z105 PR dash 001. Is anyone in the audience?
Uh, Chairman, my understanding is that the person who was opposed to that one is no longer opposed and so that item could be voted on, on consent. This is in Councilwoman Tunes's district, along, uh, properties on Lathan Court.
Yes, so this was on the consent agenda, commissioners, and so anyone in the audience here opposing item 26 that bumped it off the consent calendar? Okay, I did not see any. One last call, okay. Don't see anyone. So commissioners, we can put this back on. Our normal practice is to put these back on the consent agenda, but we have to vote on that, so, um, so is there a motion to place, after seeing no one here in opposition on item number 26 that was on the consent agenda? Any, is there a motion to put item 26 back on the consent agenda for approval? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose no? Eyes have it. And I'm butchering today's meeting, but we're going to con- Alright, so we are going at lightning speed. That concludes four items and we are on item number six. Ready for the presentation. Laszlo, you're back. You never left.
Yeah. Alright, this is item number six and the request is for a concept plan approval to create 77 lots utilizing the compact development standards. And staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site consists of one proc- property, which is approximately 34.83 acres. The site is zoned single-family residential and has been zoned RS15 since 1998. The site is also within the Whites Creek at Lloyd Road Urban Design Overlay District that was applied in 2017. The property is currently vacant and contains no existing structures. The site has frontage on a Clarksville Pike, a scenic arterial boulevard, as well as frontage on a Buena Vista Pike, a Collector Avenue, as identified in the Major and Collector Street Plan. And I'll provide a brief history before we get into some of the applicable standards and regulations. So we had this application for, under review for a little- So we had this application for, under review for a little over a year and it's gone through several iterations. The applicant originally applied for a subdivision with a larger total acreage and most recently reduced the area of the site through deeding off an unconventional five-acre property. The area at the time the application was originally filed included a combination of the areas outlined in red, as well as the five-acre portion that was deeded off, which is shaded in gray. State law allows for property over a certain size to be deeded and not be subject to subdivision review. However, an unusual situation has been created by the deeding off of a portion of the property uh, into an unconventionally shaped parcel. It's not a part of the subdivision anymore. The current area outlined in red reflects the deeding situation that has occurred and is the boundary of the current submittal. The Planning Commission has adopted subdivision regulations that include standards for specific transects. Since the site is located within the T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy, within the T3 Suburban Transect of the National Next General Plan, the regulations found in Chapter 3 of the subdivision regulations were used to evaluate. In our analysis of the proposed concept plan, staff also used the Compact Development Standards of the Metro Zoning Code, which are intended to create opportunity for a diversity of housing and recreational opportunities by creating usable open space and allowing a mixture of residential lot sizes. Staff found that the proposal meets the proximal option of the standards by being located within a quarter mile of a Major and Collector Street Plan classified arterial. And the proposal also meets the minimum site area requirement by having more than five times the minimum lot area for the base zoning district. Taking a look at the site plan, you'll see that the, uh, there's a total of 77 lots that are proposed and those range in size from about 7,500 square feet to just over 22,000 square feet. The plan draws access from Buena Vista Pike and Clarksville Pike and proposes five new local streets. Additionally, the plan provides a total of 12.36 acres of open space with 4.69 acres shown as usable open space. So the maximum lot yield determined by the Compact Development Standards was 80 lots and the proposal complies as includes a total of 77 lots in the plan. The standards require 15% of the site to be set aside for open space and 15% to be usable open space. The proposal sets aside approximately 35.5% for open space and 13.5% as usable open space. The Compact Development Standards allow for design flexibility uh, in lot sizes where proposed subdivisions can reduce their lot sizes from the minimum required base zoning district, um, an equivalent of two smaller zoning districts. In this case, the minimum base zoning is RS-15 and the reduction of two smaller zoning districts is RS-7.5. The standards do allow for additional reductions in minimum lot size with additional usable open space provided. And while the plan did include more usable open space than required, the plan um, does not exercise that additional flexibility and all the lots comply with the minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed subdivision consistent with Chapter 3 of the subdivision regulations, as well as the previously discussed Compact Development Standards. And the proposal achieves the purpose of creating usable open space and allowing for a mixture of residential lot sizes. And we approve with conditions.
Thank you, Lazlo. And so Commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing as the applicant in the room. Welcome. You have eight minutes and you can save two of the minutes for rebuttal if you don't use them.
Patrick Mapier, um, 710 Frida Villa, Madison, Tennessee. We'd like to start off by thanking planning staff for their considerable time and effort that they spent on this review. I believe Lazlo Martin reviewed maybe almost 10 to 11 versions of the plan um, over the last nine months, working back and forth with several comments um, from the agencies and uh, planning staff uh, themselves. We hope that this plan will serve to meet the housing needs of Nashville, which we know is a crucial need. We know we're about 90,000 units deficient, as defined in the Housing Infrastructure Study, a unified housing strategy released by the Mayor's Office and several recent and pending zoning code text amendments that have served to increase housing choice and housing supply. The concept plan we present here today represents over two years of work performed by former Lucas Engineering and Kaiser Voguen Design. During that time, this plan has evolved to accommodate two zoning code text amendments that have regulated major subdivision design. During this time, we've held two community meetings. The first occurred on November 14th of 2024. That was where we presented the initial concepts of the neighbors at a community meeting. The second and most recent, which was October 16th of 2025, to present um, the most current version of the plan, where we believe we had met all the requirements, conditions, um, and comments we've received from staff. We did make one final change to shift a public street alignment, remove a handful of lots and increase landscaping buffers um, where you see along that southern portion um, of the site plan there. As Lazlo noted in his presentation, the site is zoned RS-15. It has been zoned this way since 1998. It does contain a UDO, which was placed on the property in May of 2017. The subdivision is proposed under the existing entitlements and does not request a zone change or increase of entitlement. As Lazlo also noted, the maximum yield is 80 lots and this plan proposes 77. And the open space that we have provided in the plan more than doubles both requirements, both in the passive and active open space. The plan provides a total of 12.36 acres of open space, representing 35.5% of the site, 4.69 acres or 13.5% of the site, um, which exceeds the 5% minimum for active usable open space. One design detail we would like to point out for the plan is that, as you can see, the first lot on the southwest corner, that lot is approximately 180 feet away from the new proposed public right-of-way along Clarksville Pike. Lot 60, which is on the Loop Road in the top right-hand portion, that lot is located 377 feet away from the new proposed public right-of-way along Buena Vista. Through the course of the concept plan review, we've also provided staff with exhibits that show how each lot can meet the requirements of the UDO. So for material standards, for layout, for garage position, um, all the requirements of the UDO we have showed can be met within this plan. New sidewalks are also proposed on every public street within the concept plan. We are proposing new sidewalks along Buena Vista and Clarksville Pike, which meet the standards of the Major and Collector Street Plan. All agencies have reviewed and provided recommendation, a recommendation of approval with conditions. As you might have noted from the staff report, there are several technical conditions that we intend to meet during the review of the final site plan. We'll work with Endot to make sure that all of those items have been met. We have also received an approval for the multimodal transit um, plan that we've submitted from Endot. And in closing, we hope that the Planning Commission will consider this as much-needed housing within the area. We're also happy to answer any questions you may have or any, entertain any additional conditions of approval that may be warranted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Sean Henry, 511th Avenue North, representing the property owner and the developer, Schuler Tennessee Holding Company. Mr. Schuler and his company acquired this property at a farm auction in July of 2022. There were 18 lots that were carved up for auction, uh, and he bought eight of those. And the, what you see now is the, the eight lots that he purchased now proposed for subdivision. Uh, I believe you'll hear from some other people here today in opposition to this who also acquired some of those lots at that auction. I was at the community meeting in October and we appreciate Council Lady Kimbrough in, in hosting that and helping advertise that. What I heard largely was the, a concern about the zoning that's out here in this area. When you look at the zoning map, this property is zoned RS-15. Uh, to the east, it's RS-20, to the north, R-15, to the northwest, RS-10, to the west, RS-40. You've got a variety of zoning districts out here and, and it seems that because our zoning code allows a reduction in lot sizes, uh, and it's a fairly new provision in our zoning code, we think a, a lot of people just aren't comfortable with that. There's certainly other subdivisions out here that have been approved in the past, you can see them on the, on the property maps. So there's quite a few subdivisions out here that have been around many decades, but they don't have the open space that this subdivision has. Uh, those were conventional subdivisions that are out there today. This new style of subdivision is providing great protection of natural, uh, natural amenities and uh, and, and with that requires uh, sometimes a reduction in lot size. So we'll reserve what we have remainder for rebuttal. Thank you.
Minute and 50 seconds for res- remaining for rebuttal. All right, so that brings us to uh, anyone wishing to speak? For or against or neutral, come on up and if we line up and. Yes, and the Council Lady, uh, we always reserve uh, the last. The best for last, the councilperson.
You always told me the best was first.
Chairman, you're, you're, well, yes, uh, first and last.
My name is James Lawson. I live at 3969 Lloyd Road, not far from this proposed development. I served 16 years on this commission and I'm very well familiar with not only the, how the uh, community defined what its growth and, 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 and needs were, and this is right on the board of the line, but my major concern, and you'll hear from neighbors today, where the concerns are. Mine are with traffic. Living there and seeing what has been done to Clarksville Highway, when the new four lanes open from Ashen City Highway, that intersection there, all the way to Riley Parkway, has increased the traffic on Clarksville Highway going past not only this proposed development, but those that are already established. With almost 77 homes, and my, my math, Mr. Chairman, may be a little, a little bit rough. I project over 300 car visits out of that subdivision going onto Clarksville Highway, which is a death trap at this time. You get more and more traffic there because I-24 is problematic for traffic going in that direction. It always has been. So we see a lot more truck traffic, a lot of more commercial traffic and a lot of uh, residential property traffic going north. To me, I was, and I was wondering why the staff and, and, and all of his work, and they do an excellent job, why no traffic impact study was done? Because it's an obvious situation where that needs to be done, so we're not killing people. And I think that if this project goes forward, what is going to happen is that, maybe I won't be around, but in a few years, as it gets to maximum, you're going to see more congestion, more accidents and more death. I'm sorry. You'll hear, and I'm gonna take two minutes, two seconds, that uh, you'll hear from others for respect for existing rural character, transition between compact rural lots, conflicts with the Nash- uh, Nashville rural laws and so forth. Uh, there are other people who will speak on it, but that's my major concern.
Thank you, Chairman.
And thanks, Commissioners, for all you do. I know you do a lot.
Thank you for all your public service on this body, Mr. Chairman. Welcome. Yeah, just give those to Lazlo and we'll get it to everybody. Thank you, welcome.
Hello. My name is Patrick Cummins. I'm president of the Native History Association based here in Nashville. Coming in front of you today regarding the Schuler-Clarksville Highway project, of course. The Native History Association is a nonprofit organization based in Nashville that works to preserve and protect Native American history. Uh, we strongly recommend that Phase 1 archaeological survey uh, work be done as recommended by the Metro Historical Commission. We also would like to ask that this be a requirement for approval of the concept plan by the Planning Commission. There are five recorded archaeological sites located along White's Creek in the vicinity of the proposed project area. And at least one of these sites, less than a mile away, is a recorded prehistoric cemetery that contains Native American burials. Another recorded site, three-quarters of a mile away, contains features that may indicate Native American burials as well. Two sites are within 500 feet of the project area across Buena Vista Pike and White's Creek Pike. And while human remains have not been recorded at these two sites, it is important to note that none of the five known sites referred to above have been thoroughly investigated. So it is possible, if not probable, that all of these sites may contain Native burials. Another factor that should be taken into consideration is the project's location along sections of White's Creek and Dry Fork Creek. These locations were desirable because of access to fresh water that they provided. So there is a distinct probability that Native American cultural resources may be found near any source of running water. Also, parts of the project area are located only 1,000 feet from the confluence of White's Creek and Dry Fork Creek itself. The confluence of rivers and creeks were especially favored as settlement areas by Native people. With that, I thank you.
Appreciate it, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Good to see you folks. Hi, my name's Angela Williams, I'm from White's Creek. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the White's Creek Historical Society. Um, I was wanting to help people, community members, to help um, organize the uh, the historical society and White's Creek was founded in 1779, cradle of Nashville's history. The farmland in question um, was um, from Frederick Stomp and his widow, a buddy of Andrew Jackson. It's 2,500, talk about rural, it's 2,500 feet from a cornfield and a soy field. So our little four acres really doesn't address what's going on. Um, it was the home of Bill and Jean Thompson, dairy farmers. They auctioned it, their family auctioned it in five-acre tracts to help the community and preserve the character of the community against exactly what has happened. The UDO and the um, the, the putting together of those lots um, was done in cooperation with the community, this was not. We worked diligently in the past 10 years of being um, the community that participated the most in the Nashville Next process, with 95% of our community in favor of a rural character. So we think that the Rural Conservation Subdivision standards are more in keeping with our community and our, and our trajectory. And we ask that you um, use those as the precedent to help preserve our community as a rural historic community. We are on the National Historic List as a rural historic community and this property is, is adjacent to that rural historic district. We have a lot to preserve, we are the cradle of Nashville's history and we do have over eight structures that are witnesses to the Trail of Tears, which is unheard of from the National Park standards. We ask that you help us to preserve and project proper development in our community and you have the authority to do, to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you all. Hello, Commissioners. My name is George Ewing, I live at 4601 White's Creek Pike. Thank you and thank staff for all that you do. Section 312 of the subreg states that the subdivisions shall comply with the adopted general plan of Nashville Next. Commissioners enjoy a considerable amount of discretion to exercise the authority to disapprove. In Hudson v. Metro, the Tennessee State Court of Appeals ruled that the Commissioners have the authority to determine whether a concept plan complies with the adopted general plan. 2021 Save Ivy Drive v. Metro affirmed that while staff's job is to advise, the Planning Commission is still required to consider the proposal and vote based upon its own judgment of compliance with the general plan. In Hudson, as in Save Ivy Drive, staff cannot substitute their judgment or instruct the Commissioners that they do not have discretion to come to a different conclusion regarding approval. From the community plan, due to the past zoning and development decisions, a few areas of suburban policy are located in White's Creek. These areas should remain mindful of their larger surrounding rural contexts development occurs and complement the adjacent rural area. Due to the natural and rural character of White's Creek, the community anticipates modest growth, which should be rural in character. From the Community Character Manual, the intent of T3 Neighborhood Maintenance is to maintain the general character of neighborhoods as characterized by their development pattern. Appropriate density is determined by the existing character of each individual neighborhood in terms of its setbacks, spacing and block structure. The average lot size of the quadrangle surrounding this, the 125-acre neighborhood formed by Clarksville Pike, Lloyd Road, Buena Vista Pike and Dry Fork Road, is the average lot size is 2.72 acres. The average lot size in the proposal is 89% smaller. Neighborhood is currently 0.28 units per acre and the proposed subdivision subdivision is an eightfold gr- greater intensity than the neighborhood that surrounds it. There are areas for each pattern or pattern transition, areas with appropriate zoning policy and context, but here failure to maintain the existing character results in non. There are areas for each pattern or pattern transition, areas with appropriate zoning policy and context, but here failure to maintain the existing character results in noncompliance with three one two. Most key here may also be that the proposal average lot size is a full one-third less than the minimum base zoning lot size. By failing to satisfy the contextual transition, design, diversity, character, and preservation goals of community plan, I ask that you disapprove.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Welcome. Two minutes.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being here and for your service. I appreciate you. Can you hear me? I have some handouts.
Um, yes, first, this is the, these are handouts from the historical.
Ma'am, what do you? Yeah, give them to Laszlo. Thank you. Oh, okay. All right, let's give her two minutes. We're very fair here, as you all know.
He'll reset the clock.
Okay, go ahead. Reset it again, and then you can go.
Oh, I can go ahead and go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Let's reset it. There we go.
Got it. Okay. I'm Lisa Proctor. I live at forty-one twenty-nine Dry Fork Road, and I'm the president of Friends of White's Creek, which is a five oh one C three neighbor group. We were formed in twenty nineteen. I'm going just to read to you our mission statement. The mission of Friends of White's Creek is to cultivate community by envisioning, protecting, and promoting the character and history of the natural, environmental, archaeological, cultural, and agricultural resources of rural White's Creek through events, outreach, education, and fundraising. So I wanted to start with that so you would know who we are as Friends of White's Creek. Friends of White's Creek voted several months ago on this issue that has been going on for over a year. And so we have a position statement that you have before you. I will read one minute of that. Friends of White's Creek joins their Lloyd Road, Dry Fork, Buena Vista Pike, and Clarksville Highway neighbors in a consensus of collected concerns about the subdivision proposal. Friends of White's Creek invites the applicant to work with the neighbors to improve the proposal as it pertains to the letter and intent of the adopted Nashville Next neighborhood maintenance policy, the conservation development standards, and the White's Creek at Lloyd Road overlaid district. Friends of White's Creek does not support the proposal as currently submitted, but welcomes opportunities to discuss and improve the proposal. As submitted, the proposal fails the intents of the U D O and the T-three N M policy. It fails to appropriately meet the existing neighborhood character and threatens the integrity of the farmlands' rural context. A national register historic district eligible site adjacent to the historic scenic and agricultural qualities of the eighteen fifty's Graves House and the neighboring White's Creek Rural Historic District. Thank you for your time, and I certainly hope that you will disapprove. This is submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. More handouts. Thank you. And you're ready. Go ahead.
All right. My name is William Worrell. I'm with the Nashville Tree Conservation Corps. The Tree Corps urges you to disapprove of the proposed compact development, which does not meet the intent and requirements of the recently enacted conservation development standards and attempts to circumvent the requirements via precedent-setting loophole that would jeopardize their integrity throughout the entirety of Nashville and Davidson County. The proposal must be disapproved in order to ensure the continued integrity of the regulations. The Tree Corps worked for months with N C M Henderson in the drafting, revision, and finalization of the Conservation Development and Compact Development regulations. We were concerned that landowners would attempt to preemptively clearcut a parcel or creatively adjust parcel lines to evade the conservation development requirements and to rather use compact development. In order to avoid a loophole, we added the following verbiage to the regulation during the final legislation drafting. End quotes, "A property that is required to utilize conservation development that has since been modified to remove natural features shall be prohibited from using compact development." In this case, the property was initially determined by the Planning Department to trigger the conservation development requirements. Then the applicant modified the property by subdividing to remove the natural features from the parcel. The above quote would apply, and compact development is prohibited from use at this site. The proposal before you must be denied. Thank you for considering the precedent-setting proposal before you. Allowing the applicant to modify the property to circumvent the conservation development standards would set an unacceptable precedent, opening a loophole and jeopardizing the protections throughout the entirety of Nashville. Please do not allow the jeopardy of these standards, one of the very limited tree protections we currently have. Just this morning, I communicated with Vice Mayor Henderson. She stated that modifying a property like this to void the conservation was not the intent of her ordinance, and she has been worried about something like this being attempted. She is engaging the Council Metro legal team. She said, end quotes, "Our December departing legal counsel has not taken up this matter as vigorously as I would have hoped." Please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Ma'am, what are you asking for? Ma'am? Yeah, well, let's show it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. I'm Gladys Herron, and I own residential property in Cherry Grove, which is a subdivision behind Lloyd Road. I'm speaking not only for myself tonight, but I just handed out the petition, and that's for a hundred and seventy-four others, about a hundred and seventy-four others, who could not be here because of their job. A lot of people just can't take off at this times, but they did send their concerns, and if you look at those petitions, we'll go over it a little bit. I want to highlight three things in the petition. Number one was reducing the number of the houses from seventy-seven to thirty, so that this concept would be compatible with other built subdivisions within the area. And looking at that picture up there, I had to bring, I just, thank you so much for doing that. When you look at that picture, William H. Thompson is the man who owned all this land in this neighborhood for some years. And for some time, he also spent time on the planning committee. When he retired in late, early two thousand, he decided what he would do is use some of his land. He was not a developer, but he wanted to establish a neighborhood where people could come and be a part of it, what he had enjoyed. And as a result, what he did, this Lloyd Road, even the name of the street, Lloyd Road, is something that he built. He put that in. And as a result of that, he began to build small subdivisions surrounding that area so it would not cause any problems for the others who live there. And one of the one things he did is made sure that each subdivision that he built, all of them averaging less than about thirty total, that they all comply with the T C A thirteen dash seven one oh three, which is public housing and planning, which states that when you build a subdivision, it cannot increase congestion. It has to also take in consideration of the people's health and welfare. And one of the main things we're concerned about now, if this goes through, fire department.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can't get to some people in time. So thank you very much. Please disapprove this.
All right, thank you, commissioners. My name is Eric Skelzo. My wife and I own the historic home known as the Graves House, sitting on twenty acres, immediately adjoining to the south of the proposed concept plan. And I, along with the four people standing behind me, ask you to deny the application as proposed. This case is not just a referendum on density, growth, zoning, or the character of the neighborhood. It's a straightforward question of legal eligibility. The code establishes very specific conditions for when compact development may be used and when it is prohibited. Your responsibility today is to simply apply these standards as the council wrote them. Compact development is allowed only if the applicant meets the eligibility requirements. And the code is equally clear that if those requirements are not met, the Planning Commission has no discretion to approve a compact development subdivision. Here, the applicant fails the threshold requirements in two independent ways. First, the property is required to use conservation development, and because it has been modified to remove natural features, compact development is expressly and automatically prohibited. And second, even if you ignore the rule against modifying the property to remove natural area, the plan as submitted still contains more than ten percent natural area, which triggers mandatory conservation development standards and independently bars compact development. These are objective criteria. They're not matters of personal judgment. They're not matters of neighborhood preference. I've written four letters to planning staff. They're in your record. The latest one was July eighteenth. I hope you guys have read them. I enjoyed writing them. But they talk about how planning staff is getting this one wrong. Sorry, Laszlo. I handed out something today with six pointed questions that I hope one or all of you ask planning staff. You are going to be unsurprised or unimpressed with their answers. Challenge the answers they give you, that Laszlo gives you. The responses fail common sense, logic, and a plain reading of the code. If the applicant had submitted a proposal consistent with the code, I would not be here today. If the applicant was willing to comply with the rules, I would be silent. It's his land to develop as he sees fit. We simply ask that you apply the code as written to the proposal before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi there. Elise Hudson, forty-six oh one White's Creek Pike, speaking in opposition, and thank you for what you do. It still blows my mind that you are all volunteers, so thank you. Under Tennessee law, every landowner has a clear statutory right to subdivide property into parcels of five acres or more. We fully acknowledge that right. Likewise, under R S fifteen zoning, a landowner always retains the right to pursue an as-of-right subdivision with fifteen thousand square foot lots. But today's request is not an as-of-right subdivision. It is a request for a density bonus under Metro's compact development standards. Compact development is not a right. It is not guaranteed. It is not something a developer is automatically entitled to use. It is a permissive mechanism. The code states this explicitly. A property may utilize compact development if and only it, all prerequisites are met. This means that the rights come from the state law and the base zoning, and these extra permissions or permissive mechanisms come from the commission and only when the code allows them. A developer may always develop by right in an R S fifteen subdivision or five acre statutory division. They can put fifteen thousand square foot lots there. But a developer only gets to use the bonus density of compact development if they follow every rule Metro Council has established. The applicant here has not met those rules. This is not a situation where the commission is, could potentially be taking something away or a right away if they were to disapprove this. It is a situation where the applicant is asking for something they're not entitled to because they have not met, they have not satisfied the legal prerequisites per the Metro Code. Compact development is a privilege, not a right, and here that privilege should not be available to them. We ask that the commission disapprove the current proposal and the additional density above what the code allows. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
I am Jeff Hunter from seven zero seven two White's Creek. I appreciate you letting me come speak today. The code offers two permissive lot reduction development tools. First is the compact development and the conservation development. As you know, these tools exist precisely because Metro Council understood that the smaller lots and different street patterns can help housing affordability by permitting additional density in developments, but only if the trade-off is the conservation of natural features or the open areas are used for the benefit of the broader community. The Metro Council made the policy choices very clear. When a site contains a meaningful natural area, you must use conservation development to protect and retain those areas. Or a site when it contains little or no natural area, you may use the compact development instead and provide community benefit through designated open areas. The entire structure is binary by design. As the planning staff recognized this in the applicant's original submission, they told the developer the original concept plan could not use the compact development because the natural areas exceeded the natural threshold under the code. In response, the developer exercised their state right law and carved up five acre parcels containing much of the natural area and then resubmitted the new compact development plan. We do not object to the landowner's right to make these five acre divisions, but the consequence of doing so is dictated by the code. And if the property is required to use conservation development and has been modified to remove natural features, the privilege of compact development is lost. The developer may pursue R S fifteen as stated before, and they may pursue a conservation development plan, but they are not eligible to use the compact development standards after modifying the property in this way. On a personal note, I moved here because of, from Texas, and this rural community atmosphere appealed to me, and we're seen to be losing it with packing all these houses in such small area. And I don't want my two granddaughters learning to drive on this highway. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, folks, for doing a thankless job. I'm Jim Sheraton. I live at sixty-nine fifty-six Old Hickory Boulevard. Metro Council wisely anticipated. A developer might attempt to avoid conservation development requirements by redrawing parcel lines around natural features, and to prevent this, they adopted Code seventeen twelve, which states a property required to utilize conservation development that has since been modified to remove natural features shall be prohibited from using compact development. The language is mandatory, shall be prohibited, means the commission has no discretion once these conditions are met. So there's two facts that are clear. The property qualifies for conservation development. Planning staff reached this conclusion when they instructed the developer to resubmit under conservation development because natural areas exceeded the threshold. Fact two, the property was modified after the conservation ordinance was adopted. In twenty twenty-two, a land was subdivided and recombined in a way that removed substantial natural area, floodplain, and protected areas from the tract submitted for compact development. It does not matter that the landowner had the right to subdivide. It matters that the resulting modification removed natural features from the property being evaluated for compact development eligibility. Under Code seventeen twelve, compact development is automatically prohibited. The commission, this commission has no lawful path to approve this request. Again, thank you for a thankless job. Please disapprove.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
My name is Tim Coats. I live at twenty sixty-four Shaw Road. I am a native Nashvillian. And even if the commission were to somehow conclude that the twenty twenty-two boundary changes were not a modification under code, compact development is still unavailable because the proposed concept plan contains more than ten percent natural area. The applicant asserts that natural area totals nine point eight nine percent, conveniently just under the threshold. But that calculation is incomplete and inconsistent with the code. Under seventeen point twelve, natural areas include tree protection zones, which is measured to be the greater of ten feet around the trunk or the diameter of the drip line of the tree. The applicant omitted entire areas of natural areas, including tree protection zones that extend into the development track. For all these trees whose trunk lie just across the new property line, natural features do not stop at the survey boundaries. The code does not direct planning staff to ignore natural areas that cross property lines. As shown in here, there is a substantial amount of natural area in the form of tree protection zones that extend into the concept plan. Despite the presence of the tree protection zone constituting natural area in the concept plan, the applicant ignored same from its calculations and submission. We ask that the Planning Commission direct that such natural area be counted as the code requires. The applicant has already surveyed every tree on the entire property, including those on the five acre carve-out. There is no practical barrier to calculating the canopy area and tree protection zone that overhang into the submitted property. The applicant just decided not to measure it and submit it as part of the application. They must be required to do so. Once those areas are properly included, the natural area unquestionably exceeds ten percent. And when natural area exceeds ten percent, code bars compact development, code mandates conservation development. Thank you. I'm opposed. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, evening. My name is Stanley Troyce, and I'm a resident at thirty-nine fifty-two Lloyd Road. Guess I've been there about twenty, twenty-two years. I was one of the first persons to bought one of the lots on Lloyd Road. I talked to Mr. Thompson years before then, and he kind of explained to me what, what his idea was about the land. I talked to Mr. Thompson years before then, and he kind of explained to me what, what his idea was about the land in that area. He wanted it to remain rural. He didn't want the compact development or whatever they coming up with now. The lots were, to my knowledge, were supposed to be RS-15. I assume that was somewhere around a third of an acre. Now, we're cutting it down probably about one-eighth of an acre, just to get as many houses as you possibly can in one little small area. By putting this development in, in the area at this time, it's only going to bring more developers. They're going to come out and go want to do different things also. We'll be back here again a year, two years, fighting and doing the same thing that we're doing now. The developers are already there, just waiting to see what this development, how it's going to turn out, and then they'll be in. So I'm just totally opposed to this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Come on up.
I'm Ashantua Holly, and my family lives at 4031 White's Creek Pike. This subdivision, although they don't mention it, the Buena Vista part goes directly into White's Creek Pike and contributes to our traffic congestion that we have in the morning and the afternoon. Also, they also didn't mention that the exit goes on the area of land that collapsed into the creek twice. So the area's infrastructure is not built to maintain the level of traffic of adding additional 77 houses. And as my neighbor was trying to speak on, if we have any sort of emergency personnel that need to come down this street, they're not able to do it. We're a two-lane highway. There's no way for them to come if there's a fire. If there's any sort of dead person, they just have to sit there because there's nowhere for them to go. So I am completely against this project, and I just ask you to take that into consideration. Thank you all.
Thank you. Come on up. Welcome. And if everybody would line up so we can make sure we get everybody. Welcome.
My name's Asha Holly. I'm just a college student. Now, it's like speaker or be quiet on this issue, and so I choose to speak. I'm totally against because going to college is already very hard. So imagine if adding more cars and more construction into this building. While construction has been happening due to all the gas stations around, it has been hit several times by construction workers on accident, leading to booms. And I could hear that from my room. So imagine you hear a boom in the middle of the morning. You're scared. While also, it leads to my college, because imagine trying to go to college and you can't even get out your driveway due to the amount of cars that will not let you out. While also, coming home, they will not let you into your house. So imagine trying to get out while also trying to come back into your house. It's very unsafe. That's it. Thank you, guys. And I hope you guys appeal, obviously.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? We want to make sure we get everybody. All right. Seeing none? Two minute, a minute and 50 seconds of rebuttal. So go to 10 seconds. One, one minute and 50 seconds. Mr. Henry.
I'll wait. Tell me when to go. So first of all, this subdivision provision under, using the zoning code provisions does not increase density. There's no increase in density. There's no bonus density. There's no additional density, and that's what you keep hearing. The RS-15 zoning district allows almost three dwelling units per acre. This entire subdivision is two dwelling units per acre. Two. Section 17.12.080F, as in Foxtrot, has been cited as the subdivision not complying with that zoning provision. Frankly, you're not the, you're not the board that interprets the zoning code. There's another, there's another board for that. But in any event, this is a penalty provision. This provision was put in place when someone wants to do a compact development, a compact subdivision, and they realize that they've got too many trees because they're not, not going to be able to build as much. They go out and they remove trees. They clear cut trees, harvest trees, pull those trees out of the equation, the mathematical equation, so that they're not penalized. But if they do remove trees, they are penalized. There's been no trees removed here. No trees have been removed. So there's, there's, there's no basis for suggesting that this property doesn't come, doesn't, isn't authorized under that for compact development. And for context, and it's been taken out of context, agricultural uses, if you've got agricultural nursery, it exempts nurseries because nurseries can grow and remove the trees. Secondly, and that's under that same section, it refers to natural features disturbed or removed. There's absolutely no trees that have been removed from the property. They remain and they will be preserved on this adjacent piece of property. Happy to record a conservation easement, tree preservation canopy at the final plat. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counsel lady. You're up. Welcome. We appreciate you coming down, and you have as much time as you need. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. I believe this is my first time as a councilperson appearing before this body. But it meant so much to me and to my district, my community, the district I was born in. So I wanted to make sure I was here. If you don't mind, I would just like to recognize the people that are here tonight. Would you please stand on behalf of this District One people? Thank you. All right. I jotted down a few points I'd like to make. Can you hear me? Okay. All right. I want you to know first and foremost that the District One residents do welcome growth. We do welcome that. But we want it to be smart growth and development that complies with the rules set forth by Metro Council. Metro Council has made it clear in the code for development to obtain density in excess of base zoning, that project must comply with the rules. The proposed project fails to comply with those rules. For this reason alone, it should be rejected today and resubmitted in compliance with the rules. Even if it complied with the rules, the density and nature of the proposed project is incompatible with the surrounding lots, incompatible with Nashville Next, and fails to comply with the intent of the UDO. The lots are significantly smaller than the immediately surrounding lots. The density is significantly greater than the general area. There is no gradual evolution in the area to the density proposed. I encourage the applicant to work with the planning to develop a proposal that comports to the rules, the Nashville Next plans, and the general feel and nature of the surrounding community. District One residents deserve better, more thoughtful development that protects what is there while allowing for growth and development. This is what I want to make clear. I, as councilwoman of this district, do not support this project as proposed and asked for it to be denied as currently submitted. I wanted to make my position known on that.
Listen. Okay. Counsel lady, hold on a second.
Yes.
This is not a protest. This is a public hearing. Clapping is not appropriate. We have to keep it professional. So if we have more of that, then we'll ask, we're going to stop the hearing. We'll ask you to leave. Counsel lady.
Thank you. So to approve this plan as submitted would be, I believe, to undermine the intent and spirit of the code and therefore the council. I'm here today, like I said, I've never been here before because this is so important for us in the district and in White's Creek. And I just respectfully request and ask you to deny this as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel lady. You did a great job first time here. Appreciate you coming down. All right. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Dundon, why don't you go first? It's your turn.
Thank you, Chair. So I guess there's two things, separate things going on in this one that are really sort of.
Commissioner Dundon, let me, I forgot. I, we really also need to, before you go, let's get a reminder. I think it's, we do have a new member on the commission, so let's get a reminder about the difference between a subdivision and a rezoning. And so if we could get, if we could have our attorney talk to us about that, and that way we know.
Okay. So state law gives the planning commission the authority to approve subdivisions in Davidson County. The commission adopts regulations governing the subdivision of land within Metro. The subdivision regulations are what govern the planning commission's consideration of a subdivision. Subdivisions are exclusively under the authority of the planning commission, and they do not require approval of the council. A subdivision creates new parcels but keeps the underlying zoning the same. There's no change in use from a subdivision. There are also things like street placement and easements that are recorded on the plat as part of the subdivision. The council adopts and amends the zoning code and has purview over zone changes, which do regulate use. Generally, recommendations related to rezonings from the commission are more policy-based, while subdivisions are more administrative. The commission is bound to apply the subdivision regulations that the commission has adopted. And the courts have said that the commission can also take into account the general plan in this consideration of a subdivision, although the subdivision regulations are based on the general plan. And I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Thank you, counsel. Anything else, Director? We need to add to that? I think that's perfect. Director, do you want to add anything else before? Commissioner Dundon. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
No, not at all. Thank you. Okay. So, so I guess, and that was actually helpful because, so the two things that I'm thinking about are the regulations. And it's, I think, several commenters noted about this carving out of the five acres that then potentially impacts this modification language in our, in our, in our code. But that's been carved out. So I, I think what we need to look at is the parcel that is before us. And what is concerning to me really is whether it meets policy and just the parcel we're looking at. So in the last, in one of the other ones with the, the policy, you know, I look at what does the policy direct us to do? So in the one before, it's enhance and create various factors. This one, the T3 Neighborhood Maintenance, is telling us to maintain the general character of the suburban neighborhoods. That's the intent of the, of the policy. And it says to maintain them as characterized by their development pattern, which includes land use. So while I think we all recognize we need density, we need developments potentially like this, I, I'm not convinced that it meets the policy here. And the reasons are, so one of the policy directives is efforts should be made to retain, to make, sorry, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood in terms of its development pattern, building form, and land use. And the density in particular, the policy guides us to say we need to have low to moderate density residential development and institutional land uses in this T3NM area. So here we have this large area of a T3M policy. It's transecting this rural area nearby, rural, T2 rural maintenance. But the staff report is saying that the air, the general acres or the parcels around this development are about a half an acre or larger. I think some of the commenters had a much higher number, but just using in terms of what the acreage is of the parcels surrounding it. But just going by the staff report, it says a half an acre or greater. So that's the, to me, that's the character of the neighborhood according to the policy that we are being directed by this policy to try to maintain. This development, most of the lots are less than a quarter acre. So that's more than 50% looks reduced, more smaller parcel sizes than the character that we're supposed to maintain under this policy. So I don't see how this is low to moderate density or consistent with an effort to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. I think those are the two big factors here that are making me feel this is not consistent with policy. Yeah. Just another comment in the, in the T3NM, the appropriate density is determined by the existing character of each individual neighborhood in terms of, and then there's a number of factors listed. But I, I just don't see how we, how this plan is maintaining the character according to the policy. So that's, I think that's my, my, I'm inclined to, to recommend disapproving this because I don't see it's consistent with policy, irrespective of this other outstanding issue about whether it meets that section of our code.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Councilman.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the commissioners pointing out that this is neighborhood maintenance policy, and we're not supposed to change the character of the, of the neighborhood or the existing density. However, I think this proposal is consistent with neighborhood maintenance. I think as the staff pointed out here, we're not changing the existing zoning or density of the, of the property. The zoning is staying the same now. And if we approve this or if we disapprove this, the zoning and land use is not at issue here. If the existing zoning is not appropriate at this site, I think that's something that the council member is fair to revisit in a, in a separate matter. I think the question for us here is an administrative one, whether we meet the subdivision requirements. I think staff's analysis is, is yes. So I'm inclined to, to vote in favor of approval here. And if the council member responsible for this district is concerned about the existing zoning, I think that's a separate matter this body would be free to take up separately, but not the question that's before us at this time.
Thank you, councilman. Any other discussion? Commissioner Hanley and then Commissioner Leslie.
Thank you, Chair. I think I'll probably make my comment or state my question maybe more plainly. I think the thing that was presented to us and read many of the letters, but the fact that, you know, there was a presentation and a submission to planning prior to, and whether it was strategic for the right intent, maybe just to gain a more advantageous position, that there was a modification in, in the parcels and the parcel lines. And obviously, we're seeing something before, so it is extremely unique in terms of shape and contours. And when I see that, it gives me pause. I think more than, than maybe any other word that I would use. You know, being a developer in the development realm myself, you know, the, the name of the game is to be creative and innovative and try to find strategies to, to deliver things. And hopefully, the things you deliver are meant to be impactful and helpful to a community. I think we have a community that's come out to tell us they don't necessarily see it maybe as impactful in a positive manner. But I, but I do want to ask a question, I think, of staff because, you know, there's been a, a history with this. It's, it's taken a while to get to this point in this iteration. And just kind of plainly ask, you know, there was a submission prior that probably had some other requirements. And now there's a submission now that maybe has different requirements. Is there kind of a very kind of high-level bullet point of differences that can be shared with the, with the commission?
Laszlo? You want to?
So the question was about, you know, previous revisions and kind of, yeah. So what we're looking at today is the most recent. I kind of described the deading off of, I guess, that, that area that I've sort of shaded in, in gray. And so previously, we had, you know, a version of this with, within this review that had a larger scope, about 40 acres. And, you know, the plan that we've reviewed today is, you know, with this current parcel configuration. So we've tried to focus our staff report on the configuration that is today. Previously, the 40-acre one did have. Previously, the 40-acre one did have, you know, features that we, you know, had to count towards the percentage of, you know, natural features per the standards. But with an updated scope, you know, it could have been five acres, it could have been more, that they, you know, dated off, that we were, you know, kind of having to review based on what they submitted and the scope that they submitted.
Are you sort of asking the difference in number of lots from the previous plan to this plan, or?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think, I think my question was mostly answered. I think the reason I was asking the question, right, is there is, there was a modification, right? There was, there was a previous version iteration, and it happens all the time, right? I think, you know, some of the, I guess, comments that we heard were that, you know, we're not, as a body, and staff included in that, adhering to certain guidelines. But I think, I think Lesley used a very appropriate term, is, you know, the scope that you were asked to evaluate, including, you know, the boundaries, hasn't been modified. I think it's probably more of a question that's to maybe other more appropriate bodies to determine whether or not that's an appropriate path to take for someone who's submitting things to our staff. But again, I think my, you know, my kind of immediate response to what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing is that it gives me some pause. It's not necessarily the warm, strong advocacy feeling that I feel when I see, you know, nearly 80 units going into a community where we know we need housing. It seems a little bit different for me today, and, and I think some of that context is why, but I just wanted, I wanted to get that clarification, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Lesley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're creating about 80 houses. My concern is that, why was there not a traffic impact study done?
So there, there was a traffic, MMTA. We, we don't call it a traffic impact study anymore. We call it a multimodal transportation analysis. That is referenced in NDOT's conditions. So there was, you know, outcomes of that report that was given to them where they're referencing, you know, some, some improvements, some, some minor improvements just because of the scope of this. You know, there, we, we had emails about, you know, is there going to be new traffic light installation, and that was not warranted with that analysis. But there's some minor things that they have incorporated into the plan and would have to provide with the final site plan.
Do you know what those minor things are?
Yeah, I can list a few of them for the conditions, and they're in the staff report.
Here, I can start off here. In the staff report, there's a, per the review of the MMTA, the applicant is to provide a northbound right-turn lane on Clarksville Pike at the New Public Street intersection. And the, let's see, the applicant shall install all necessary traffic control signage at the New Public Street intersections within the subdivision. I don't know, was there any other offsite?
Yeah, there is, there is one more besides the right-turn lane that I think is impactful, which is, and that's citing that they will continue to coordinate with them to implement additional striping, signage, and/or delineation improvements at the intersection of White's Creek Pike and then Lloyd Road and Buena Vista Pike. So some, some minor enhancements, but really along the lines of striping, signage, and delineation, including that northbound right-turn lane that I mentioned.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair?
I think I kind of wanted to thread the needle between my fellow commissioners on this side. So I do understand Councilman Horton's perspective here that, you know, in some ways, this is, generally speaking, a more administrative task that we see regularly, and I, and I think we can look and see that, you know, in many ways, no, we're not increasing the density, we're not changing the zoning, you know, that's all, that's all clear. But I think as Commissioner Dundon read out, you know, one of the other things that we're really bound to consider is the, the policy, the T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy. And the intent there is to make sure that we're maintaining the general character of that suburban neighborhood and the established development pattern. And I think I agree with Commissioner Dundon that, that, you know, 7,500 square foot lots, .3 acres is just not consistent with the surrounding pattern that's well, you know, well north of an acre. And so I do think, you know, having been back and forth on a number of these subdivisions, you know, that are referenced in some of the materials that have been provided to us, I think that we did tend to think, as long as it met the requirements and was consistent, then we had to sort of say, you know, we were no longer able to consider not whether something was harmonious. We sort of had to say, you know, it met the standards, and therefore we approve it because we've approved our subdivision regulations to be consistent with the general plan. I mean, it is very circular. But I just think, you know, and I kind of struggle with this overall, how a compact development would work well in any kind of a, you know, suburban rural area. I know that that's part of how we have it in place here, but I do think, you know, going down three, two or three, not zoning, what are, lot size, is going to generate this tension. I mean, it's almost impossible to figure out how it would be consistent with the, with the existing development pattern, just because it is such a significant change in these areas where you have such large lot sizes to begin with. So I, I mean, I see the tension between the two sides for sure. But I think in this case, to me, it's just, it's so apparent that it doesn't, is not consistent with the general character of the neighborhood, that I think I would support the disapproval of the item.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other discussion?
I have a question for staff. Talking about whether change will come to this area or not. If we disapprove here, what type of development potential would the property have otherwise?
It's still zoned what it is, and there could be a, another application with a different layout that has a different lot size, street layout, design. There's always more than one way to design a subdivision.
Okay. I was just curious if we, if we say no here, if it stops the property from changing in the future or not, in a way that might be different from this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So it's time for a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion? Vice Chair?
I will make a motion that we disapprove staff's recommendation to approve this item.
It's a proper motion to disapprove staff's recommendation. That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any?
Oh. Thank you. Our legal counsel is recommending that we add a little bit of language reflecting the basis of the disapproval.
The disapproval that this is not consistent with the policy intent of the T3 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy.
Thank you. And our legal counsel says that's sufficient, and so there's a, we'll go into this again. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a proper motion, proper second. Any other discussion? All in favor of disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? No? Hides have it, it's disapproved. All right. It was two noes, just for the record. All right. That leads us to, so I do, at this time, I'm, I'm going to hand it over to the Vice Chair, but before I do that, and I do want to thank everybody for coming down. I want you all to know that we love Nashville, this body, we love you all. Many of you have been here before, and we love you guys coming down. We love to hear from you, so thank you. All right, so I do want to introduce a new commissioner. I should have did this at the beginning, and I totally apologize, Commissioner. But we do have a new commissioner that I believe is taking over for our lovely Commissioner, Stuart Clifton. And so we, while we miss Stuart, we have a lovely new commissioner, and that's Area Deng. And I, I want to just say this about her, that I think is, is just so interesting. She's a graduate of the Naval Academy, and she's a Marine veteran, and I just want to say thank you for your service from one vet to another. We need our soldiers, and thank you for your service. So now you're even doing more public service, so welcome. So we really appreciate you coming down. If you want to say a few words, it'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that warm welcome, hurrah. Happy to serve again. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. So I'm going to pass it over to the Vice Chair, and, and we, I think we have one more item, and so, okay.
Okay. Do I need to do something?
Nope, just a call on the team. Welcome.
Okay, this is item 14 on the agenda tonight. The zoning code was recently amended to define and regulate electric vehicle charging facilities as a standalone use. This bill is filed would amend the code to add new subdefinitions under electric vehicle supply equipment and add electric vehicle charging station as a utility use permitted as an accessory use in all zoning districts. The amendment codifies, codes as practice of permitting charging stations as accessory utility uses in parking areas, further defines the electric vehicle supply equipment, introduces related definitions, and establishes zoning districts where each are allowed with conditions, and establishes screening, buffering, screening and buffering standards near residential Features of the text amendment include two definitions being clarified based on the amount of kilowatt outputs. Level twos have current outputs of 3 to 22 kilowatts and are typically smaller, and then DCFCs, the Direct Current Fast Charging, has current outputs of 50 kilowatts or more, and they're typically larger and louder than the level twos. The text amendment details where the different types of EVSEs are permitted. Level twos are permitted as an accessory, utility accessory use in all zoning districts where, while DCFCs are permitted as utility accessory use in all districts except AR2A, RS, and R districts. The amendment also clearly outlines operational limitations and buffering provisions to limit noise. The bill provides clarity and predictability for EV charging facilities as utility accessory uses, and supports Nashville Next Goals of Sustainable Transportation Infrastructure, Planning for Emerging Technologies, and Compatibility with Surrounding Neighborhoods. And staff recommends approval, just so, just to note, this item does need to be deferred to the January 8th Planning Commission meeting per the MPC rules and procedures following the public hearing, and also the council member has deferred the council public hearing to January 20th to allow for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to be received prior. And that's all.
Thank you. So we're the applicant, right, on this one? Is that right?
The council member is.
The council lady Allen. Okay, okay. Didn't we, is this different than the one we heard?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so with no applicant here, I guess we will just turn to the public hearing. Is there anyone here speaking in support? Anyone speaking in opposition? You're the only one.
And I will note that Council Lady Allen couldn't make it today, but she said she would be at the next meeting, I believe.
Great, great. Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing, and Councilman Horton, would you like to get us started?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think, you know, hopefully as electric vehicles become more common in our city and our country, hopefully we start to see more electrical vehicle charging stations. I think this is something that our current land use code is inadequate to in its current form, so I think adding these new land uses will add helpful clarity and allow us to be intentional on our land use policies surrounding electric vehicles, and I think this is a good measure.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Dundon?
Just to clarify, did you say this is the same one we heard, or it's different? Can you just explain what the difference is?
Yes, so this, I'll go back a little bit. It's including, it's kind of given subdefinitions for the level two EVSEs, and so it's kind of specifying, I included a picture to kind of display what the difference is, but the DCFCs are typically the ones you would see in like shopping lot, parking lots, or things like that. They're a lot larger and typically louder. But this kind of provides further delineations between the different types, and then also operational limitations and buffering and things like that. So it kind of just splits it down a little bit more.
Okay. And the one we heard before was about just the accessory?
It was more about for commercial vehicles, to allow charging stations for commercial vehicles and fleets.
So this is going to be more like a restaurant wants to put one or two, or is it going to be residentially impact, impact residential?
So the, the one that you all heard the last time was for a standalone use of charging stations, where it was the only use, and we talked a little bit at that time about how Target or even our campus here, we have some of those charging stations on site, and codes has always just allowed them as an accessory use. This just codifies that they are permitted as an accessory use in those certain instances.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, that helps a lot. Okay, any further questions? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Do we need to, a motion to defer this?
Yes, I'm sorry. We, a motion to defer this until the January 8th meeting.
I move to defer this to the January 8th meeting.
Proper motion, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Any opposed? No, motion carries. All right, sorry, I got a little thrown off coming in at the last minute. Okay, so with that, I think that brings us to the end of the items that we are hearing tonight, and we will turn to our other business, and our historic commission rep is not here tonight, so that gives, turns us to the Parks and Rec report. Do we have any updates from Parks and Rec?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. I just want to take a moment to highlight a wonderful opportunity that we had. So it was part of my service to the Planning Commission. I serve on the Parks Board. I also have the opportunity to serve on the Greenways and Open Space Committee, and the Greenways and Open Space Committee met this week. We did a site visit, kind of a field trip, and we went to Modera Riverview, which is near New Hof site along the river. And it was just a great opportunity to see an actual culmination of the collaboration between the Planning Department, the Parks Department, and, and our land use developers that are really adopting and buying into our goals and desires to extend our Greenway connection. And so we were out there, had a great tour, a great amount of conversation about how the collaborative efforts between those departments and water services as well. Obviously don't want to leave them out considering most of our greenways are in, are in the buffers zones. But it showed a great model, I think, for how that development can really work well in, in, obviously with the city, I'll say, you know, facing and embracing the river again. It's a, it's a great template, great spokesperson from, from all sides. We're, we're there to talk about how the collaborative effort worked, and the, the project has been quite successful economically as well, which is always, I think, one of the big drivers in terms of adoption when you think about the land use community from the practitioner side. So all that to be said, I think, you know, compliments all around, great work from, I wouldn't just compliment our planning staff, and obviously just the championing of, of the policies that we've pushed forward over the past few years. I think we're in that wonderful spot where you get to start to see those things actually come to life. You know, we, we do a lot of things on the screen, and we see black and white text a lot, but actually being able to experience it, I, I think that like every other person that walked past us was like walking their dog and, you know, or dogs, and it was really just great to see a space that old Nashville would have been very dormant and, and not as vibrant, and it was, you know, 36 degrees, and people were out and walking in an area that probably would have felt desolate, you know, five or six years ago. So it was really great to see, just wanted to highlight that. Hopefully there'll be many more opportunities for me to give reports like this one, but just wanted to just share, I think, the compliments that came all around from the, from that committee, as well as the developer representative that was, that was there and just spoke very highly of our staff and the park staff and other departments that made that come together, very much a collaborative effort, so just wanted to take a moment to highlight that.
That is a great report, and yeah, thank you to the whole staff that's still here. Anything, let's see, for the executive committee report, I do not know of anything. Director's report? Director's report?
Just wanted to take a moment to update the commission on the housing legislation and where we are. And I might tag team with Lisa here a little bit, but council held several public hearings and discussions around four of the zoning proposals that you had previously reviewed and approved. There were a number of amendments that were elevated and prompted a lot of conversation about managing growth in the city. And how zoning really relates and informs that. And I think, I think the conversation was good. We have a lot of work to do to really think through how we talk with the city generally and our communities about zoning, how it relates to infrastructure, which is a next step on our plate and other decision points. And what just continues to, to strike me is that we have such a varied city environment. So many planning departments and commissions are dealing with smaller urban areas or suburban areas. And we have rural, urban and suburban. And you saw some of those, those types tonight, even on your agenda. And talking about how we as a city are responsive and a department are responsive to those varying needs, I think is, is a big challenge. But I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Gamble and Allen, who sponsored some of the work, but also Councilman Horton, who came in in this really unusual transition moment as we were trying to sort of work through what has been a several year process. And so Lisa, anything sort of on the more details and what's to come?
Sure. So just to let you know, sort of the status of the bills, the, the first piece of legislation which created the two new zoning districts, RN and RL was approved with a delayed effective date. And so that will not become effective until early April to allow for some internal planning work to be done in regards to updating the community character manual. 1006, which is the bill related to RNRS and the heights, is still pending before council. That one just got a little bit behind. And so that one will be on third reading at the next meeting next week. The 1007, which is related to DADUs, was approved and is immediately in effect. And then 1008, which is the companion bill to the RN and RL, which is the voluntary affordable housing incentive, will be heard by council in January.
So what I might suggest is, is our practice when we're dealing with sort of larger efforts is to schedule a work session so y'all can be aware of the next work. We want to be productive as we close this process out and, you know, and want to make sure that we're creating a good platform in front of you. And then for council as it considers always other policy work generated by the Planning Commission. But I do want to acknowledge Councilman Horton, who had to oversee several hearings and other things in a new, in a new role as we were getting all this going. So, thank you.
If we do a work session, can we touch on what's going on with the infrastructure study? Because that was such the point of tension that I heard a lot in the public hearings at council.
Absolutely. And, and what I think is so challenging is when we, when people, it's kind of like how you define affordable housing. When people talk about infrastructure, there are a lot of different ways that folks think about that. Almost every conversation I have, there's sort of a different understanding and definition. And so we'll be working with the right committees to make sure we platform that. There are infrastructure and mobility committees at council and, and seek Councilman Horton's you know, advice on how to make sure that we're properly working through that. But even if you think about the CIB or the operating budget of the city or our capital programs, you're dealing with infrastructure investment. And so zoning is one piece of a larger puzzle that council would consider at budget time or the administration would work through. And it looks different for departments that build it. And so we're giving careful thought to how we talk about that because I do think, and Lisa mentioned this in one of the hearings, that perhaps there's a sense that what we deliver to council is going to be a precursor to zoning decisions only. And it, it really should be a more nuanced and more thoughtful than that, especially for a city of this size. And so I'll be looking for count, for this body to, you know, help make sure that we're elevating that properly. So thank you.
Thank you. That'll be exciting. And thank you guys for getting this far. It's a big success for 2025. Legislative update. I guess we crossed into that.
Yeah, I think that was a pretty good summary of where we are. No, no other legislative updates from the council.
Great. All right. Well, I think that that brings us to the end. And before we adjourn, I guess, happy holidays. This is our last meeting. I know council has one more week to go, but we are done until January. And I guess just as a refresher, we have one meeting in January and it's our early meeting, right? January 8th. And then we do not have the second meeting in January and we pick up again with our two meetings in February. So just for, as you're thinking about planning ahead. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, thank you.